Oh, okay. To you, Joy. Please, I don't have to do all that, so we'll call this.
Tim Barrett.
Here.
Linda Duncan. Tom Fitzher.
Present.
Bob Metzger. Tara Oyn.
Here.
All right, Mr. Renette, are there any changes or corrections to the agenda?
There are none. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Then it's approval for the ninth and thirtieth work session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, sorry, guys.
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Alright, do we?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Ms. O'Donnell, yeah, I'll let Ms. O'Donnell introduce Eric Grunder. Talk a bit about the DC trip and the inner workings of that, so.
Yes, so joining us tonight is Eric Grunder, who is our government teacher for our seniors and also teaches our senior life skills class, both requirements to graduate. And as we asked the Townsend Foundation, as we wanted to keep the Washington DC trip alive, but thought perhaps maybe we should move it to a more mature group, especially as we're sending these young people out into the world as voters and prospective workers. So Eric has spearheaded this and had a parent meeting and has been in touch with senior parents and he's gonna tell us about his plans right now.
This is the organization is Close Up, which actually my mom took students on when she was at the University of Oregon for project work. It's a similar, so it's a similar function. It's more than just a sightseeing trip. There is a congressional work session where they try to pass legislation with other students from across the nation. We meet with our representatives on one day, obviously do some sightseeing, but it's sort more intensive. There is a educational leader with each group and they leave them for discussion questions at those sites. They talk about justice and, you know, civil rights and then those things. Except there's a number of different activities there. The cost is on there, it's twenty-one oh four. The Townsend Fund has generously given us a lump sum. And so right now we're looking at the total cost for the students is four hundred dollars. We fly out Sunday, we fly back Friday. Yeah, it's amazing. So the dates, which is kind of the big thing, I surveyed the students who would be interested and then what dates would work best. I know seniors often take that spring break to go on a family trip, means the last time around, and so I asked them during spring break or before after. Also, we have the band trip that's over spring break this year as well. So after I did the survey and got some information, the week that would work best is the week before, which is what I have it priced at. The advantage there is spring sports, you know, it's practice, but no meets or tournaments or they won't miss anything. And there's nothing else going on, there's no band, there's no flyers. It was one of the few weeks of the year that there's not a whole lot going on, this doesn't happen very often. And with seniors, most of them, the only class that they take that's required in the spring is my class and they'll be with me if they're missing. So I figured that was, you know, best for everyone. I have twenty-four were interested. I have gotten like confirmation, I had a secondary seat that I had their parents sign and give information for eight, and I've talked to like five or six more that are pretty sure they're gonna go. So I'd love to get to twenty, I think that would be awesome, so I'm gonna keep bugging them. The due date for the initial payment is October sixteenth, which Joy and I set. They don't have the fund, but because, or they don't have the money till the twenty-fourth, but because we're covering more of that, we're gonna have them pay the school and then that fund's gonna go, we'll make the down deposit, the deposit payments, and then the rest is in January. So, and we won't have, you know, fly through that information until we have the final numbers, but yeah, I'm pretty excited about it. I think, you know, the kids, you know, there's a bunch of great kids going already, so I'm excited about the group. Depending on numbers, Kate Weekly has shown interest in wanting to go, she'd be awesome, and then I have a couple other people that I might ask. I'd love to do it just staff potentially, if possible, just teachers, just 'cause I think it'd be great for the kids to have, take a little ownership. But I know there's a handful of parents like, I'd really like to go. So we'll see how we get his numbers and then we can adjust as far as chaperones go.
Oh, heck of an opportunity.
Yeah.
That's.
You'll have to bring him when you guys get back.
Yeah.
Come talk to us. That's awesome.
That's really good. Cool. Well, keep us posted, but yeah, we just let the board know and we're out of state trips and whatnot, so it's cool sponsor. And I think it's wonderful, this is starting something we do each year.
Me too. I think this is the most appropriate place to have that trip.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think that's a group of kids that will just, it'll mean a lot as they are entering into adulthood.
Well, I think the, yeah, the other advantage I like about too is just that urban experience too. Right, we'll take the metro, we'll take the subway, you know, we'll do different things, which I think is great, getting to travel a little bit. I mean, we do have some free time there where we can kind of explore some, we're on at the beginning and end of the trip, we have some overtime, which will be good too. So, you know, some kids just don't get to experience those opportunities and so, and the Townsend's can fill in that gap, which is amazing, so.
The number of kids, like I was kind of shocked, I guess, a little bit, but I, maybe my kids would fall into it too, is they've never been away from their parents, you know, I mean, no less, you know, that far away, so it's.
I assume they've never been on a plane before. That's gonna be the time to fly.
Yep.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Freak out.
Sit back away from me.
Don't throw out.
I'll sit next to you.
Oh. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Alright, what other questions for Mr. Grunder?
That looks really structured.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah.
And we'll try it out too, like I looked at planning on my own, just 'cause we'd like the opportunity to explore and sometimes it's a little too rigid, you know, I know in some of those eighth grade trips, it's so fast paced, so we'll see how it goes. I, I think it's gonna be a nice blend looking at what we do each day, but, you know, we'll experiment and then we can always transition from there, but this is a highly, you know, it's highly praised, this trip, so.
Two years into it, you may have a great idea, this works, this doesn't work, so then you can do it.
Yeah, okay. Exactly.
Oh, that's great.
Looks good.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I already have. Alright, I only have a few things to mention, so if you would look at upload for taxation on financials, I just want to point out the management fund. I just want you to know the reason why that dipped over two hundred and thirty-five thousand from last month is we paid the unemployment compensation, the worker's compensation, the compensation, and then all our district insurance plus the breakdown. It's a big chunk of money there, okay? So otherwise, the rest of funds are just fine. Upload number five is instructional support. Two-thirds of our expenditures, everything was zero. So everything for tech, the teachers, we had our first annual heating and cooling agreement payment, we had elevator inspections, all that stuff that happened. So we tacked on a hundred and twenty-five thousand to what it was last year, but all those, all that billing came through and those are in the bills if you need to look at any of those. Then I'm going to jump to activity fund. Let's see, I think it is upload number eleven. And just real quick, the couple negative balances there. The first one is fall canteen, that's starting up, so kind of same old story, you heard this last year, once we get that gone, that will go away. And the other one is sheep under the FFA enterprise, and I explained that last month as well. Otherwise, that's looking good. And then I'm gonna go right into the board bills. And honestly, I'm not sure what the upload is on that one, I'm on a different screen. Twelve?
I got fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. So as you scan through that, I just want to point out a couple things that we normally don't see. Eleven, almost eleven thousand went out for reimbursements to the teachers due to the Townsend grant, but obviously Townsend gives us that money, but just to let you know, you know, a lot of teachers did that and are getting reimbursed for the classes that they took. The other thing I will point out, if you look under J's for the Jamison bills, I think we are done with the greenhouse. And once I have those gathered, I will submit that to the insurance company, so we will be getting reimbursement for some of that as well. And then Fund Thirty-three, there's a lot of expenditures that took place in Fund Thirty-three. Over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you will see all temp refrigeration, we made our second payment for the HVAC project. We did have another Martin Garner architect expenditure there. Our outdoor security project, there was almost sixteen thousand dollars there. And then the football field, we got their audio upgrade, but that is something that we use Townsend funds for that. Okay? Questions? I know that was kind of quick, but there wasn't a lot to point out, and I've been busy with CAR, SE, SES, audit, all that stuff, so we're just getting the bare bones tonight.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm not used to doing this. I'm sleeping over here.
I'm just, to save time to get to parade that tonight, I just would ask if you have any questions about anything, that's less than other than that you know, otherwise, I don't, I won't present anything formally, but if you have questions, just let me know. Started the school three weeks ago today, it's hard to believe. I mean, literally, it's just bang, three weeks. One of the coolest things, just elementary, I'm gonna pipe in this amount of having the parade through today.
Well, I saw.
That was so cool. The high school team sprayed it through, the band, the homecoming corps, the beaver.
Isn't that cute?
That was awesome.
I think beaver.
As far as the drummers made it up to stairs.
I know.
So the band out front is the third one, so there's been a different, different activity here, you do step rates for here Monday and cross country is here Tuesday, all the wall I think's tomorrow, and I think football is Friday.
You just think how you can.
You just look at the way to incorporate some of that, you know, these kids are normal like you are, but they're seen as superstars looking.
We gotta look back to our conversation, the work session of leadership, like, be a leader.
Be a leader, step up.
Remember, they're watching you.
I think the high school kids got just as much or more out of it as the elementary kids ever did, just, and just, yeah.
I felt like it was free advertisement, quite honestly, band kids playing through the hallways, football, you know, all those people marching through there, then it was free advertisement, quite honestly. You think that band's loud at the gym? It sounded like the drum corps was going, you know, the march, it was just, it was really, really cool.
That's awesome.
Really cool. I just had to put a plug in for that.
And the beaver didn't zip it, that was, it's very hard to see out of that. And as we got going, our beaver was like, you can see, that's why I did have a safety person coming. It was good times. Well, in my report, I just kind of did some touch, I know it's only been a few weeks, but we're up and going, our AIW with Joe here, if you want, we are looking at units instead of just like individual assignments, tasks, those things, we're trying to grow that and see our effectiveness, so kind of going deep, I would say is what we're doing. We're also partnering, I put that in there with a PhD, PhD candidate, is going to be joining us, kind of studying and what we're doing and how we're trying to grow our AIW behavior and to measure our success with it. So he and I have been meeting virtually and then he'll start coming in person on Wednesdays here, so trying to just learn, and then also, since he's a researcher, he can help us with, you know, what's the latest there. Behavior program, I just shout out, we're impressed that even our new teachers are coming, you know, like the discipline sheets are equally, there's nobody overdoing it and nobody underdoing it, we were pretty impressed that everybody's doing what we wanted to do, which is our goals, reduce the swearing and reduce the back talking. And I think everybody's been really hammering out, so we're happy about that. They, these students have really figured out the sensors work, so that has come to calm down already, so that's good. And the last thing, this is not on here, but I, the FFA wanted to let you know they're planning to go to the National Convention in Indianapolis, November one through four. They started doing some fundraising last year, as you know, we were kind of behind the eight ball, but now we've got some good fundraising funds and we're trying to grow on that and getting the list of other activities that we like to take our kids to while we're there. So we're pretty excited about it and, we're, we're opportunities, the success that they make, you know, the different workshops that are there. They have a lot of, you know, a lot of partnerships, I think it was a great, I know it was a great experience for the kids who went last year, I'm hoping that more kids will sign up for it, because there is a lot of leadership opportunities for the FFA and especially at National Convention.
Right.
So, yeah, looking forward to that, and I think that will be a good trip for everybody.
Hey, just a dumb question, what is AIW?
Authentic intellectual work, sorry, Joe. It's the professional development program that we use here. Basically, when we look at what we're doing in the classroom, what deep thinking, higher order thinking skills are we eliciting in our students, how are they making connections with their learning? Is there value beyond school, real world value with what we're teaching, the effectiveness? Yeah, can they articulate what they're thinking, what they're learning back to us? And then we have different teams, today we were actually in content areas as we were looking at our unit work, but normally we have unlike content area groups that meet every Wednesday morning and take, whether it's the teacher task or the student work or whatever, and look at it collectively and they score it. Eric, you wanna jump in since you're in on this too?
Yeah.
Any other ideas that you?
It's a, it's a rubric system that audits how we teach and then we get to offer suggestions or improvements to each other's work. So it's three parts, task is the assignments to the tests that we give, so we're looking for instruction of knowledge. Are they building the knowledge or are they just repeating what we told them? Lab of communication, are they supporting their answers and coming to conclusions or one or the other, and then dive beyond school? Are we somehow connecting it to what they're, to the real world, either what this person would do in this field or what they might experience in the real world, and that's just one task, and then we have, then we have instruction and student work, which are, is similar, so there's three parts that we grade each of those on. The unit planning was something that we had talked about with Suzie, who led us through it the last couple of years, and then we developed a unit plan, and we're gonna, so we're gonna take an entire unit and we're gonna grade it in that lens. So how many times are students having substantive conversations, which is another category, where they get to converse with each other or the teacher about important concepts? How many times are you doing that in a unit? How many times are we assessing them? Are your assessments building to the summative assessment or is there a disconnect? How many times, how often are you in doing direct instruction versus group work first? Right, like, and so the idea is to look at, take a broad look at these things through the work that we've been doing the last, what, five years?
Essentially, teachers helping teachers, being better teachers.
Yeah, growing, growing each other.
So.
It's putting a numeric system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On, on what we do and then if, if it, if it's low hanging fruit, let's, let's pluck it and move on.
Yeah, and we've told, and when we started, we told everybody, bring your worst hats, don't bring your golden baby, that you don't want to change, 'cause we're gonna rip it apart. So everybody did, they brought tasks and we tore them apart and rebuilt them and it's better.
And the nice part is eventually you design tasks in the AIW lens, I don't design any tasks that don't fit, that wouldn't score high, because I don't know how to do that anymore, right? And so as.
Because as you're writing a task, you're like, oh, they're gonna rip it.
Because you're thinking, okay, they're just repeating what I already told them, this isn't very good, let's do something else, right, let's extend this activity to whatever, so, yeah, it's.
Faster.
I think it's, you know, it puts that, like you said, when you write a unit, you write an assignment, you're, you're already forward thinking, like, what it is I want them to know, but how are my, my colleagues going to view this? And I don't wanna, you know, we don't want to go in with just asking surface information or, you know, we want to make those connections, and now we're taking it deeper as a whole unit, right? Are we successful with this? Are we really bringing that, you know, that deep thinking, those substantive conversations? And are we connecting it? So I'd say now we're just growing our, our teachers, but definitely growing our kids.
Cherry on top is it, it involves all content.
Everybody's.
It's not just math, it's not just science, it's not just social studies, and fine arts, every segment, partners, adults can benefit from it.
That's great.
Which is a little tricky when it gets to Spanish.
It's a language.
Speaking of which.
Okay.
We get fingerprinted and well. We talked to the BOEE, was that two days ago we told you? He told me, provided everything with the fingerprinting background goes through, we will have Spanish and they're gonna serve her an ELL too, which we didn't ask for.
Awesome.
They thought she was qualified, so I will send, there'll be a fireworks display.
We're gonna march Karen.
We go home.
We are hoping like Monday or Tuesday.
Those confetti cannons they had at.
Oh, I have seen pretty cool.
Oh my, it's just been.
I know you spent a lot of time on it.
It's, it's been a learning curve, like I can't even tell you how much we've, you know, we've learned and how difficult this path has been. I have my, I have a whole new appreciation for the people that are trying to do it the right way.
Right.
Because we sure don't make it easy.
Correct.
We still have to go change her visa too. We haven't, you know, we're step by step, but yeah, we'll, we'll have to still do that, so.
Thanks for.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think she's a great candidate for the job, so I have very, very appreciative.
We've been very pleased in the classrooms with what we're seeing, the kids are enjoying it. It's just, it's been really nice at these programs.
Not sneak anything past her. In Spanish.
She kind of knows that language well, I notice, too, that, and the kids have been great in there.
I've heard Yvonne has been a good team too, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, Yvonne is like.
But those two together, like, rock star. I think.
Rock star, me too. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just about AIW. You think back to our educations where there were like multiple choice exams and just regurgitating, you know, what year did Columbus sail the ocean blue? Now it's much more in-depth, connect the dots, can draw, conclude, it's just, it's a lot deeper thinking, which is what our kids need today. Information's out there, you can access anything on the internet, how do you tie the, you know, tie it together and how do you draw conclusions? But we're also trying to get it to a point where the curriculum's not disjointed, like, well, we never discussed, you know, how many kids do I hear, well, we didn't talk about that, yes, we did. It's test time, yes, we talked. But how can you make those connections a little bit better so they're not caught off guard when it comes time to test? Well, I gotta throw Townsend's bone here, that's who funded this to start it. Not many schools do the AIW, 'cause it's expensive, and there was a commitment, this has spanned now how many years since Mr. Snaveley started?
Six.
A year six. You know, so when we do something, we look at the long ball approach, this isn't a flash in the pan, we'll do it for a year or two and then go to the next big thing. We also started out with pilot teams that got introduced to them and got kind of used to it, then we enrolled it out, whole staff, with having seven people in the pilot team.
It was.
Two pilot teams. You had two pilot teams. Yes, we did. We had thirteen, but it was, it was a lot easier to spread amongst the staff, 'cause we basically already knew what we're doing, then Suzie would help them, you know, to, so. So it's multiple years of just, you know.
Getting better, getting better.
It's a year and a half to have that program.
Well, what is our, I don't know. There's your. No, we don't, we don't. We did in the beginning, Tim, we had to do it in the beginning because of the training.
First three years.
First three years, there was a training aspect of it. Now we, but again, that's the funding sources.
Yes, exactly.
Do you have anything else?
We took twenty-something kids to Kirkwood today for the college fair. Got them all back. First time at Coral Ridge. I was gonna say, that was the bigger, you know.
But you did it, and it was good, there we go.
I went for pandas, I went for Chick-fil-A. Mr. Hewitt's done a phenomenal, his first month and a half in the job, so. Good work, Joe, it was a good time.
Yep.
That's right. Alright, ready to roll?
Yes.
Tim's got fifteen minutes, so we're gonna make this work.
Let's throw it.
Consent agenda number one, you just had the three resignations there, one of them going to the varsity girls' basketball coach, but nothing out of the ordinary, Coach Broger and Katie there taking a different job, but she's still winding us up, and Jeremy giving up the junior high to fill in for the varsity position.
Motion to approve. Consent agenda number one.
Second. Alright. No, it's okay, no, you're not, you're doing wonderful, I'm just pushing, I want to get this through. You're fine.
Keep moving.
Consent agenda number two has the board policies I have no recommended changes or tweaks to, okay? Some of them you'll see first readings under consent agenda number three, those are the ones that were for this month that I, we updated based upon some School Board Association recommendations and their policy framework. Do you have any individual questions regarding anything on the six oh four series and consent agenda number two?
I'll say.
Listen, Gary, on to consent agenda number three.
Alright, I'll go in detail with the first ten. I've never seen it a consent agenda where we almost went through the alphabet twice. That's a lot. Alright, the reconsideration committee is something we do annually each year in September, we put together a committee that would be in place if in fact someone were to challenge curriculum and would like to have it reviewed, and ultimately, let's say someone wants to have something challenged in Mr. Grunder's class, it would go, they'd make it to me, I'd put it to the committee, the committee would get together, and then ultimately we can make a recommendation to the board, and then the board can do what they want. Maybe the recommendation is, we'd like to see it removed, maybe we'd like to see it stay, maybe we'd like to see part of it, whatever that may be, the committee makes a recommendation, the board actually decides what you want to do with that. So that's how that process works, but we have a committee in place if in fact there's ever a question. That's letter A. Letter B, early graduation requests, these students will graduate in January, they, they have the option of coming back to walk with their class in, in May. So you can see, and we may have, I think it was last year or the year before, we had, you know, a couple other kids that decided in October had liked to do that, to graduate in January, but that's our list that we have right now that's on schedule and would like to be done. Letter C is our agreement with you and I for student teacher placement. We see these throughout the spring and fall if there's, all of our colleges in the area, so nothing really crazy on that. Letter D is our MCC agreement with our college credit courses, this is the same agreement with all the schools in the Eastern Iowa Community College Consortium signs, okay? So there's nothing really to point out there, that's what every school, like I said, in our consortium has, just spells out the, the details of it. Letter E, Ms. O'Donnell, I'll let her talk about this, it's about, you know, AI right now, the chat GPTs and, and different, you know, AI components that are there, and it's only going to become more complex if you've ever had a chance to experiment with chat GPT, it's amazing what it can do. Yeah.
Right, Elon Musk.
Yep, they met up there, our in-service on Monday actually has someone that's talking to our bull staffs, we're meeting over in Durant between the Wilton and Durant staffs that will talk about AI and just, you know, how to work with it. We're meeting over in Durant, between Whitman and Durant staff, that will talk about AI and just, you know, how to work with it. Yet still have the integrity of it. But if you get an opportunity, go to chat GPT and just play with it. Put in there, compare Michael Jordan to Michael Jackson. It'll write you a paper within the snap of your finger of comparing contrast Michael Jordan, anything, anything! Compare red flowers to gold. It's unbelievable, but also put in something you really know something about, because you'll see that it screws up sometimes too. Because it just goes and searches the entire web, and so any crackpot that puts something out on Wikipedia, it might have pulled that. Yeah. Still the capability is, it does, it can do resumes, it can do any letter that you'd like it to. Write a letter, I'm in fifth grade, I wanna break up with my girlfriend, put me up. It's hilarious. It's just like unbelievable, and it's like now, it doesn't take. Click three buttons, here it is.
I'm sure there's a sound check.
There will be.
Yeah, when we were exploring last spring, I said to Mr. Mar, I go, look at this here, you know, you just make up anything on there. So.
Scary.
I'm flattered my mother-in-law, I mean, it will do everything! So we wanna add something to the handbook about it, Ms. O'Donnell.
Yeah, this is, over this summer, I was with the AEA, he had some courses at night on guidance, and we met about four times, and this was final, like our final group work that we gathered to, for suggestions. Everybody's looking for something to put in their student handbooks that kind of outlines what we expected. Want to keep that, you know, we wanna stay away from plagiarism, we wanna make sure our students are, you know, having academic honesty when they're writing. So this was the first round of what's put in the student handbook. I'm sure is all of these things evolving and further, there'll be more coming up, but this is your one, yeah, so.
Chat GPT right there.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We used to.
How long did it take? She was sitting crazy, and said, he did an article about why Moses was important in the Old Testament, and you don't like it? Press refresh, it'll do another one for you. Press refresh, it'll do another one for you. It's not just one, you can, unlimited number of drafts.
But this kinda goes against the A in our AIW, it's not authentic if you're having the computer write for you.
Exactly. But as a teenager, you're not thinking about authentic, you're thinking about.
I want, you didn't die.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly.
Somebody's out of a job.
Letter F is, you can see there's two wrestling mat bids there.
So I saw that, didn't we already approve this, and didn't we already order? I thought in the last meeting you and I, or you told me they were on the way.
I said we were, Gabe was getting updated bids on the way, because it has to be approved by the board since it's over ten thousand dollars.
We didn't already approve it? I thought we'd already gotten some from you. All right, I'm sorry.
When I, when I did visit with you, I said the bids are on the way, and it's gonna be in front of the board. And Gabe had to get the updated bids, and that's what we were.
Got it.
So that's where we're at, and you can see. The, what do you call them?
It's a blame game.
Yeah. You can see the lowest bid, and Gabe wants, thinks that Matt would be the better Matt of the two anyway, so it's good that the lower one came in at twenty-two, eight fifteen. So, assuming board approval, we'll get it ordered tonight. And we have this on tape, Tommy, so if you wanna look back and see it. I know you said that, it's true. So. Yep, just the one map, where they're pricey, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, GH and I are first readings. Okay, there is no longer competent private instruction. That used to be in place before the legislature gutted homeschooling, basically. Okay, you had to have a, if you wanted to homeschool, you had to have a private instructor that was licensed. They had to come in and actually be tested, and if they weren't making progress, you could force them to come back to school. Couple years ago, they said, no, care? You don't wanna go to school, you can say you homeschool, there's no, nothing, hands off, do what you want. Well, it's not.
You can homeschool and try to present it now, too.
I know.
So, but anyway, that's why that CPI no longer exists. There's no such thing as what they define as competent homeschool instruction. Now it's just, I wanna homeschool, sign the papers. Unfortunately for some people, it's a way to drop out. The compulsory attendance age is sixteen, but if you decide to homeschool, you can go to eighteen.
Awesome.
Yeah, well, it's just a fact. Letter H is private instruction, okay? It just defines what it is now, basically, since the CPI is gone, and what a school can provide, et cetera, et cetera. So that's state-driven. And letter I is, like our PSL classes, we call that, post-secondary enrollment options. Those are the kids that take classes, MCC, Kirkwood, et cetera, and get that concurrent enrollment, et cetera. Now, the only thing in there that didn't exist prior, and it was, is if the district picks up two hundred and fifty dollars of like an enrollment cost, okay? And this is the form from the association. And we haven't had this in place, but if a student fails a class and just blows it off or whatnot, we can charge a student with this policy, you know, reimbursement of two hundred and fifty dollars. Like, you didn't take this class seriously, instead of charging the school, AKA the taxpayers of you blowing off this class and not doing it, you know, they're on the hook to reimburse it, so there's a little bit of teeth in the game, which in reality, that's how it is in the world. So that's, you see that in there, but that did not exist in our current policy. So those are the ones, the first readings, that I just wanna go over specifically. J through EP is what we went over at our August meeting, which basically, those were all the things that were put in place, the legislative changes July first. Update our policies to reflect law. So that's what I have.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda number three.
Do we have to call out which match, or do?
No, the one I'm recommending is the one that would be.
I will make a motion to approve a gen, consent agenda number three with the.
Recommended.
Recommended all more, man. I'll say.
Okay, the informational discussion items, you can see there are hirings. Our basketball coaches are Phil, Pete Robles, for Junior High Girls Wrestling. Glad to have Pete on board there. Maintenance, the goal is to get the lines painted down there in the parking lot the weekend of the eighteenth, which will be this weekend, hopefully, and the weather looks good. So it'll be nice to have those lines painted down there. I heard a lot of positives on the Good Will side from having our tailgate, so. Yeah, everybody appreciated that. Miscellaneous. Tommy, you mentioned this, and I don't know, and I was whispering to Sue earlier about this. Is the FFA night at the Ag Farm on the twenty-first, which is Thursday? Here's why I ask, here's the only reason I ask. There's volleyball at Durant that night in Durant.
So I don't know that I'm right.
Well, that's why, I'm not saying you're wrong, but. I just wondered if. I wouldn't be surprised if they had it, but yet I'd be surprised.
It's September twenty-first.
Okay, well, just FYI, we've got, boy, we got volleyball over in Durant that night, too. Then we got football in Durant.
Which we were, yeah, we were trying plenty to go to that, and that won't work.
Well, you just gotta go to the field day early. I think it starts five-ish typically. So if you get a chance, stop out, it's good to see the Ag Farm, good to have a burger. Yeah, yeah, so get a chance to pop out there. Each our work session in two weeks, and then our board meeting in October, otherwise we're rocking home. Hey, last day to turn in paperwork, is the twenty-first as well. That we know of, that we know of. If they can pick them up, we're gonna have to.
The office will be open till five at night.
All right. Otherwise, hey, kudos to our fall sports teams. All of them are just knocking it out the park. I've been really impressed, our, all of our teams are relatively young and just. Yeah, so no, hey. It's been our volleyball and football, and Cross Country, things are really, it's been a fun haul. That's all I got?
I'll make a motion to Jared, second.
Get to the parade.